All right, call tonight's meeting to order for Tuesday, November 21st. As we start out every meeting, read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment. Meets the needs of our diverse students through school, family, and community partnerships. We provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Paul Carpern.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingraham Larney.
All right. Hold on while I log in real quick. Actually, let me borrow yours. Locked in. All right, so starting off with donations. Thank you, Mark. We have a donation of in total $3,294.88, which breaks down to from the Norfolk PTO, $17.90 and $0.70 for various teacher grants, including iPad, Mark's paired lesson, some additional special ed books, and headphones for iPads. That's for Freeman. And then for HOD from the PTO again, $1,444.18, which is teacher grants, a beanbag chair. Nice. Seating for SPED, a grade one STEM kit, and then a grade one visual aid slant board, as well as an alphabet and math marks the spot. And then finally, from the Garden Club of Norfolk, they have a $60 donation which will be used by the district. So the total of those three donations is $3,294.88. Do we have a motion to accept those?
I make a motion that we accept those very generous donations.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Other than a thank you to all of them, everyone in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then moving on to superintendent's contracts. You do up in the spring, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and are they in the fiscal year, I guess it is?
June 30th, yes.
Okay. So June 30th, Ingrid's contract's up. The way we had done it last time is we formed a subcommittee for that purpose, which, if memory serves, was myself and Paul, I believe. So we need to establish that again, some sort of contract committee for that. So we need...
Do you want to enter negotiations as a group first?
Yeah. So our choices could be if we want to enter into negotiations, we'd have to enter into vote with that, and then assuming we do, not voting in one way or the particular, then we just have to establish who would be on the actual contract committee. So do we have a motion to enter into negotiations for the purposes of renewing the superintendent's contract?
I make a motion that we enter into negotiations for the superintending contract.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we need to vote specifically on the members of the committee.
Not necessarily, just...
For continuity's sake, I would be fine with Paul and I doing that again.
Agreed.
If anyone has...
That's fine.
You okay with that, Paul?
I am.
I just volunteered you so.
Yeah.
So Paul, you're doing that. So yeah, so myself and Paul will do that, so thank you. And then, I think that's all we needed, that. Then we had tabled a discussion previously on an idea that Paul will discuss further, which was feeding off this, but use of undirected donations. And Paul, let you take over as far as, you had some thoughts as far as what you want to do in this area?
Yes. The thought really is, you know, while we very much appreciate any donations to the district, because they very much help with the costs, it would be, I think, even more beneficial for the donors to understand where their money is going. And, you know, that can take place in a couple of different ways. One is when we're reaching out for donations, or if there's an organization that typically provides donations to the district, we can ask them where they would like them directed. And we can, but, you know, preempting that would be giving them a list of, you know, this is where we really could use some funds, in these particular departments, in these particular programs or activities. And just have that always refreshed and ready to go, so that we can kind of give that guidance to those donors and say, you know, if you'd like to, you could, you know, give to this program or activity and help to keep services level and appropriately funded that way. That also gives the chance for us to provide feedback to those donors as to how those dollars were used, and how, you know, any of their downstream effects that benefited the children. Those are my thoughts.
So the largest source of donations for us typically is PTO through the grant process, and they have, per the PTO, they have some particular requirements, and they have a board that approves those grants. So we could reach out to them and give them some suggestions, but they do have guidelines for their grants, and they have a board that votes on those. But there are other groups that sometimes we get. There's a local landscaper that gives us typically an annual donation. Target, we get a quarter, was it biannually? How often do we get checks from Target for...
I think it's biannually.
Biannually. So we get checks from them when people use their Target card through their, the grant program that they have. So there are some smaller donations. I know, I think one of the things that you had suggested was considering using some of those donations to offset costs to students for things like Bourndale and things like that. Is that what the committee's thinking?
Yeah, well, one of the thoughts was out there, something like that, or busing or banned, or not busing, but banned.
Well, busing we've got rid of, but banned.
Yeah, but ban fees, something like that. Really, any kind of student fee that was out there, just what could be the most useful idea to apply those funds to.
I mean, if that's the direction or the interest of the committee, we certainly could think about when funds come in that aren't directed. Sometimes we write grants to, for particular purposes, but when, when we receive checks that aren't targeted, we could think about allocating them to Student Activities Account, which funds scholarships and things like that, if that's the direction the committee. And I could certainly talk to the administrators about other areas that, in terms of student costs, that might be beneficial. The other area I thought about is sometimes we get feedback from parents about the cost of field trips, and maybe allocating those funds across grade levels to offset or provide field, you know, scholarships, or reduce the cost of, to each child of field trips. Would you like me to talk to the administrators and come back with some recommendations for that?
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Well, as far, just going back to the PTO stuff they did this evening, how was that determined, what these brought? Was that something that you, they were providing feedback initially?
They have a grant program, and so teachers can, based on things that they need in the classroom, or ideas they have for new projects or innovations, they can write a grant to the PTO.
Okay.
They have guidelines for their grant process, and then they have a board, I think they meet three times a year at their grant board, they review all the grant applications, and they vote to approve or disapprove, based on, on their guidelines and, and what teachers are requesting.
Yeah, so assume this came from somewhere. There's no one in the world someone's going to come up with some of this stuff.
Yeah, those are individual grants. Sometimes they're by the school, or by a department, or by an individual teacher. And then their board votes to, they allocate a certain amount of money of fundraising towards teacher, individual teacher grants each year. And that's selected by the board.
So it sounds like the undirected ones get some ideas as far as what would be the best use of those?
And maybe for offsetting student costs and guidelines there.
But currently, how is, how are those directed?
The, it depends. The landscape check's usually, what, $150, and that goes into student activities?
A lot of times they're used for technology, or other things like that. I think, or the most common use of the undesigned funds is to support techno...
Technology.
How about, what's the name of the organization? I'm forgetting. Rachel and Kay are both part of it. The community organization, a lot of the wives and towns are part of. What's the name? Why am I drawing a blank?
Norfolk Community League.
Yes, thank you.
NCL.
NCL, I don't think, how did, theirs comes undirected, right?
Theirs is a grant, no, theirs is grants too.
It's also a grant that's being, so similar to the PTO?
Yeah, they have a grant process, and they have a board that, that reviews the grant applications and approves as well.
So the only, so they, they receive grants just from teachers, so all this...
NCL receives community grants. But they do, they do also consider grants from the schools as part of their overall, but they also fund other community grant initiatives.
Yes, but the, the understanding of where best to put the dollars with the district is, is coming from teachers submitting ideas and...
Well, that's the guidelines of the PTO right now.
And that's, that's good. I'm just wondering if that, that applies also to PTO as well as NCL?
PTO and NCL, yes, they have separate boards, and they had, PTO has a certain amount of the fundraising designated that the PTO has decided go to teach, to fund individual teacher grants.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So that's, that's a portion. And NCL, I don't, I don't know what other grant, they fund community grants as well. They have funded, for us, some technology grants that we've written as a district. They funded an emergency supplies for the classroom, but those are, again, like any grant agency, they have guidelines for what they'll fund. We write the grant, and then they review. Anything that goes to NCL generally goes through the administrative team as well. It doesn't usually go direct.
All right.
The, the PTO are direct submissions from teachers to the PTO.
The, part of the origin of the topic is, if you can just kind of circle back, is to really to make sure that these different community groups understand where the district needs money.
Yeah.
And if they're getting those ideas from the teachers, that's, that's an excellent source.
Yep.
Because they're, they're on the front lines. They, they see it better than, than anyone else. But also just to provide feedback as to how things are being used, and some of the benefits that the kids get out of those, those dollars is, is great. But the one thing that I guess, that kind of sparked this idea with me some time ago was, what other needs do we have that the public doesn't know about? And fees, and, and just regular school supplies, it can be a challenge to some families where it isn't for others, and, you know, just helping out like that makes a difference.
Yep. We could definitely generate a list of some, some potential areas of need that we can, and we can also talk about where we see, you know, benefit to students in terms of costs that are passed on to families that could be beneficial. I'll bring that back to December.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
All right. And then moving on, actually, Mark, it'd be this for the legislative update.
On the 8th, I had a meeting with both Sean Dooley and Richard Ross. Originally, it was going to be separate, then it was going to be together, then it was going to be separate, and it ended up being together. So it was quite, it wasn't a lot of information, because neither one of them are actually on the elementary education subcommittees or committees. But I did find out that part of one of the things that they got through was $100,000 for HOD. The governor vetoed that bill. They overwrote the veto. Unfortunately, there is a chance, they said, of the governor using his 9C authority to kill it. And anyone who's not familiar with 9C, it's just, it's basically like getting a credit card with $100,000 limit on it, but it not working. There's no, there'll be no money there if he does that. They're still fighting Common Core at the state level. It's, you know, it's the battle that, you know, might not end the way we want, but, you know. And so they also, he said that they have, there's a school reform and budget reform foundation that's there, that they noticed when they, a while back, wasn't being funded. And then they were told that no matter how we fund it, it's never funded enough, and they're realizing that it's still not funded enough. No matter how much money they're putting in, it's just not enough. So it's one of those things that's probably not working. But it's all I got from that. It was not a very long meeting, but, you know, hopefully, we can get that money for HOD, so.
Yeah, we were awarded that grant last year. I think the committee probably remembers it was for design services and initial work for the HLDA roof. And it was, the governor did cut it in January of last year. So we're waiting. They have not released the application for us to apply for those funds, because it was vetoed in the first. It's just been reapproved. Once, once that's solid, we would hear from the Department of Ed. We apply for it as an entitlement grant, but we're not 100% confident that that money is going to really be available this year.
Right, that's, that's the same thing I got from Sean and Richard on it.
At least we know.
You know, but, you know, it was very nice. It was a nice meeting, and, you know, I look forward to more of them.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Ingrid.
All right. So per school committee policy, annually, the school committee has to approve all fundraising activities for the Freeman Kennedy and HLDA. So in your packet, you have a list of proposed fundraisers for the current school year. These are the same fundraisers that we have run for a number of years. So you'll see on Freeman Kennedy, sixth grade promotion fundraisers include pizzeria, the Pizzeria Uno Dinner Night, the Red Sox ticket sales, and a fifth, sixth grade dance. They also have supported in the past the Santa Foundation to support local families during the holiday season. There's fundraising, two fundraisers to offset Camp Bourndale costs. They are still being determined. They do the Read Across America fundraiser every year, and Jump Rope for Heart in May. The HLDA submitted right behind. Their proposed fundraisers, and these are also pretty much annual fundraisers, they do a food drive for the Norfolk Food Pantry around Thanksgiving. They do the Holiday Caring and Sharing, Hat and Mittens Tree, a food drive, they do a second food drive around the 100th Day of School. They participate in the Read Across America raffle. They do a rally against cancer on the opening day at Fenway Park, and the Jump Rope for Heart in May. And they have also, would like to do something around fundraising for the victims of recent hurricanes. And that date hasn't been set, but they're looking at possibilities for that. Just looking for a motion to approve the proposed fundraisers.
I make a motion that we approve the fundraisers.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No. I guess the only thing, just the hurricane one is a good idea. So that, the hurricane one is just at HOD, is that correct?
Freeman already did something.
Freeman already, okay. So it's just, I'm just looking at the spacing here to make sure this works out, so it gets, all right, looks like everything spaced out pretty well. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next thing in your packet is just the quarterly update from the Byco County Collaborative. Things are going really well for the collaborative. They're in healthy financial shape right now. Enrollment is up from last year. The biggest things that they have going on, I would say, are their two new locations, two new sites. So they moved the Life Rolls Program from Kelly Boulevard in North Attleboro to Mansion Drive in Walpole. There's a lot more resources at that location. There's therapeutic pool, cafeteria, activity room, fitness room, art room. And it also, there's another collaborative program using that facility. So there's opportunities for partnerships there. They are, we're in the process of moving the therapeutic middle and high school programs to Providence Highway. That facility's being renovated, and that will hopefully be, will start that transition in December. They continue to work with the partner districts to offer professional development opportunities to all of our staff members. They are continuing to work on student assessment, and they are piloting some new assessments for social-emotional learning for students. So things are going really well overall. The next thing that you have in your packet does require a vote of the committee. So we, at the Byco, the Byco Board of Directors has been approached by three other districts that are looking to become members of the collaborative. When you're a member of the collaborative, you, if you access the collaborative programs, you access them at a discounted rate. We have three communities that have expressed interest in joining the collaborative, and the Board of Directors is recommending that we move forward with that. The reason is, we have, from each of those communities, probably 10 or 11 students currently placed, they are looking to join a collaborative. So even though those students would be coming in at a discounted rate, if they don't access membership, they're likely to transition to another collaborative, and we're going to lose enrollment there. So the collaborative is proposing to expand and incorporate the three additional district members, but we're also proposing that we phase in the benefits over three years. So at the first year of membership, those districts would pay a 15% surcharge on all programs. Year two, it would be 10% surcharge. The third year, it would be 5%. So it would be full, a full four years before they're able to enter, enroll students at member prices. The other districts are interested in moving forward with that. So what has to happen is that all school committee, or the majority of school committee members, school committees from member districts need to vote to approve the revised collaborative agreement in order for us to move forward and file that with the Department of Ed. So I am the chair of the board at Byco this year, so you have a memo from me recommending that we move forward and approve the additional members and the revised Byco member agreement.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the Byco agreement?
I make a motion that we approve the Byco agreement.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So is the phasing in of the benefits a normal practice, where they phase it in over three years?
Other districts, yes. Other districts have done that, or other collaboratives have done that when they expand members. And we have run that by legal and the Department of Ed, and that is an accepted practice.
Okay. And these towns, you said, are aware of this?
Are, are interested in that, yeah.
That's fine. Okay. So we have no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we need you to sign as the chair of the new agreements. And the next, we have Todd Hassett here tonight to provide a quarterly budget update.
Welcome. Oh. You didn't do pink. I can't work under these conditions, ma'am. So tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of, we're just a little over two months into the new school year. This is the year that started July 1st. So I'm going to give the committee an overview tonight of how things are starting to shape up. Typically, this first quarter is sort of the loosest, because a lot is, is ahead of us in terms of staffing and, and student needs, and facility issues, which we've struggled with the last couple of years, and of course, you know, what the winter might bring. Just to recap, our current operating budget is just over $711 and three-quarter million dollars. The largest portion of the pie, the green that you see, represents nearly 80% of the committee's resources are allocated for instruct, direct instructional services. Then going around the pie, the pale blue is for other services, which is primarily transportation and health and nursing services.
Todd, can you define instruction?
I'm sorry. Instruction would include, I'm going to have a slide on each of these, but instruction would include all the way from the principal's office, or the special education director's office at the supervisory level, down through all of the teaching, guidance, psychological services, medical therapeutic services, texts, instructional supplies, building technology, professional development for our instructional staff. So it does encompass a lot of areas. But this is primarily our, the lion's share of this is our teachers and instructional materials.
Okay.
The pale blue, as I said, is, represents primarily transportation and health and nursing services. The darker blue operations represents our facilities maintenance, custodial services, technology networking, infrastructure for the district. Fixed charges really relates to contractual obligations, of which we here in Norfolk have very little. This is really primarily for teacher buybacks upon retirement. Equipment, again, we've historically not done much in this area. Of course, this school's fairly new, and we, we not only constructed it, but we fully equipped it with new furnishings and, and technology. Out of district tuitions for those students we don't service here in the district, it represents a very small portion of our budget. Lastly, the sort of darker beige wedge, just over 5%, represents the district administration. And I'll talk about each of these in a minute. Starting with the district admin, again, and this is presented at the level that conforms with the committee's budget policy, and also at the high level of the state functional areas that we report annually. So at this point, you know, the administration is tracking pretty much right on budget. I'm projecting we're at 99.6%. The wild, the only wildcard in here right now, as, as you know, might be the need for unforeseen legal services. We did have a contract settlement with the teachers this past year, so every third year we, we often have some additional legal expenses, which we don't anticipate this year. Sometimes there may be a special education case or other matters that come before the district. We have trimmed this budget back over the last couple of years as well, and you'll see we're, we're just modestly above the amount that we expended a year ago. So we're projecting this to be just under $630,000. And this includes the superintendent's office, business and finance, human resources, and district IT. Instructional services, again, that, nearly 80% of our operating budget. I mentioned the principal's office and the, the special education director in the leadership area, teaching services, professional development for our instructional staff, materials, texts, and technology for the students, and guidance and psychological services.
Bless you.
This year, and again, we're early into the school year, this is through two months of the 10-month school year. We're already projecting to be over budget in this area. We've had the need to retain additional special education aids due to some student needs that were not budgeted. And we've had some staffing changes within the teacher ranks, including some FTE changes. We've had a couple of .5 teachers that are now 1Os, and some replacements. Through all of that, at this point, we're looking at just over $68,000 shortfall in this area. We have asked the town to look at this, there's a special town meeting, as you know, coming up December 5th. I believe it's been rescheduled to.
Yep.
At which time, they're looking to supplement our budget and a number of other budgets, town budgets. But I think our share is about $68,000 that the town's going to consider there. The KP assessment was voted at a higher amount, so that's being reduced and then shared throughout a number of town departments for various needs. So they're supporting this, which will kind of get us back up to sea level, so to speak.
I just want to expand on that, Todd, for a second. So at our last school committee meeting, or maybe the meeting prior, we talked about how we had some students move in over the summer, and some new students entering our pre-K that needed additional support. We had told the advisory board when we reduced our budget request last year to fund KPs that we were reducing our placeholders in special education to accommodate, and if we had unexpected costs, that we'd be going back to the town. So the school committee voted to request they restore the $45,000 that was cut. After talking with the town financial director, he suggested that we ask for the full shortfall, and then if they can only fund the 45, let the advisory board make that final decision. So we went forward with the request for the, the $68,000 that were short from those new positions. And that'll be what's going to the vote on town meeting.
Right, and I, I was actually with him yesterday, late morning, and the plan that's going, that's going forward for town meeting does include the full funding for Norfolk Schools.
Sure.
Again, we'll, we'll be watching this and monitoring this. We, we still are continuing to experience some challenging requirements in the special education area this year. You know, typically, each school year, we, we have some things that go our way, and some things that, where we have savings, and some things where we have shortfalls. This year, it seems like everything's sort of lined up on the shorter side so far, so we'll certainly have more to report to the, the full committee and the budget subcommittee over the next few months. Other student services, again, it's a small portion of our overall budget, largely to do with in-district transportation of students and special and need students for, that are Health and nursing services. And in terms of the food service, typically, the only thing that we pay for through the operating budget is lunchroom monitors. Occasionally, as, as you senior members of the committee will recall, we've had years where the food service has been challenged, and we've had to subsidize it through the operating budget, and it would be through this area. At this point, we're projecting a savings, we're at just over 95%. And most of this savings is in the special education transportation area. We've got a couple of placeholders, and there are a couple of students that, that may require some additional services. We should know more, I think by January, from, from what... We should know more, I think by January from what Anna's been telling us. And certain years, we've also had to fund our share of transportation for any homeless students. We had one or two last year, the year before we didn't have any. Thus far this year, we don't have any that we're paying for. Operations and maintenance, primarily custodial services in both of our buildings, some ordinary and routine building maintenance and our utility and heating, utility costs and heating in the buildings. We, this area includes what's referred to as extraordinary maintenance, which years ago we did have funded it at a modest level in both buildings. We haven't enjoyed having that flexibility for, gosh, five or six years anyway, if not longer. And then the technology networking, infrastructure and support is in this area. Right now, we're at about ninety-eight and a half percent projected to be expended. So far, as compared to the last two school years, we're doing fairly well on the building maintenance side. As you know, we're slowly working toward a town-wide facility department. We've been sharing a director with the town. This year, all of our HVAC maintenance has moved over to the town facility department. And that was, as you know, one of the areas where we've had some challenges the last couple of years. And the HOD school has, is, really has come of age. It's, a lot of its systems are at or beyond their targeted useful life. So we know we've still got some challenges ahead in that school. Fixed charges, as I said, this relates to mostly contractual obligations. It could also include insurance programs and other, there's a handful of other state charges that could run through this area. It's very modest budget, thirty-five thousand. And again, it's, we're projecting a few retirements. We won't know that for a little while yet. And contractual annuity payment. So we're looking at about a three thousand dollar savings in this area at this point. We'll know more as the year goes on. Equipment, we've had a level-funded twenty-eight thousand dollar budget for, gosh, maybe four years now. And we've been able to do some improvements over at the HL of Day School. This year, we're hoping to use the twenty-eight thousand dollars to do some, hopefully some real good improvement of the wall partition over at the Day School. As you know, we've had a lot of trouble with the operation of that over the years and had maintenance done from time to time, and it's still been challenging. So that's really what we've targeted for, the use of the funds this year. The facility director is looking at what might be done in the future in terms of recommissioning some of the systems at the Day School. Programs with other districts, this relates to those students that we're not able to service here in district that are outplaced to either another state school. We don't have any students at residential programs, but this is the area where that would be budgeted if we did a private school or collaborative. In previous years, when I've been before you with the first quarter report, the available balance has typically been around a hundred and fifty thousand. At this point, I'm looking at about fifty-five thousand that's unallocated. And we've got one or two students that may require the allocation of some or all of these funds. And that's going to play out over the next couple of months. But we're in a much tighter overall position. This has given the committee some flexibility. And as Dr. Allardyce said, we've always had an agreement with the advisory committee in recent years that we'd have a placeholder, and if we didn't need it, we would turn the funds back to the town. This may not be one of those years, but more to come. But it's a much tighter position than we've experienced in a few years. So in summary, we're looking at, as I mentioned, the sixty-eight thousand dollar shortfall in instructional services, which hopefully will be funded through budget transfers on December 5th. Some modest amounts available in the other areas, much tighter in our out-of-district tuition than recent years. So at this point, we've got a bottom line of about, to the good, of about thirty-nine thousand five hundred. We're at nearly ninety-nine point seven percent projected to use our budget. So typically, when I've come before you this time of year, we're more like ninety-eight percent. This bottom line isn't thirty-nine thousand, it's maybe a hundred and fifty or sixty thousand, so. As I say, a lot of things haven't really broken our way thus far, but. So we're really keeping a close eye on things, and we'll keep the budget subcommittee informed monthly as we go through developing next year's budget. The other thing I just mentioned, this is more next year's budget, but we're also working with the other, with King Philip, with Rentham and Plainville to develop a more uniform bid specification for our in-district transportation. We've got that three-year contract maturing this year, and we'll be putting out an invitation for bids over the winter. And we're going to do it jointly, the four districts, and we're going to hold a joint pre-bid meeting, and we're going to hope to solicit some competition and also indicate to the bidders that we're very interested in sharing costs among the four districts. So Dr. Allardyce and I have been involved with that process, it's continuing. We're targeting to issue the invitation in probably February with an opening in March, which, you know, so we'll have a placeholder up until that point with an estimate of what we anticipate. And then that's really, the teachers' contract's settled for a couple more years. So really, the big, open, multi-year contract we have for next year is the transportation. We also, outside of our operating budget, manage and oversee grants and revolving funds and special funds. You talked a little bit earlier about the gift fund. We do have some entitlement grants, most of which are federally funded through the mass DESE that we participate on, and much of that supports special education. We have revolving or self-supporting fee-based programs, including our lunch program, our after-school program, SAC program, preschool, and modest facility rental revenue that we can put back into facility maintenance or utilities wherever we might need. Our grant levels, as you know, continue to be flat or on the decline. And in fact, we received notice recently that our special education, the so-called 274 grant, we're not eligible for this year. And we've enjoyed, it wasn't a large grant, but we've enjoyed access to that to support the program for a number of years.
Right, and Title I and Title II A were both cut?
Both reduced, yes. The gift fund, which you talked about earlier, this is just sort of a high-level snapshot of where it was at. We started the new year with nearly twenty-nine thousand dollars in the fund. To date, we've had almost twenty-seven thousand dollars of donations, many of which were targeted specifically for technology, as I recall. And those technology purchases are, at this point, in the form of purchase orders. They're on order, so you're not seeing them in the expenses to date, which is just over fourteen thousand. So as of the end of October, we've actually got an unusually high balance in this fund. This typically is under thirty thousand, but we've got about forty-one thousand in the fund. And I want to say there was about twelve thousand in open purchase orders, mostly around technology needs in the two schools. As Paul said, typically, a lot of this is around teacher-proposed enhancements to programs, technology, as we mentioned, Kent Warren Dale scholarships, and other special events like Field Day. But there certainly are some donations that come in that are not allocated or earmarked if you want to, to the administration to find and use. Can I take any questions or comments the committee might have?
I don't have anything. I mean, at this point, it's just such a.
Yeah, it's our.
A guesstimate at best, so we don't know, so.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Todd.
Well done.
Thank you.
You used all my questions, so you.
Okay, so we can move on to, the next thing I had was just an update for the committee about the space study committee. So we have had, as you're probably aware, the town of Norfolk has several, I think it's seven, Chapter 40B pending housing development projects. We've been concerned from the district level about the impact that those projects will have on our enrollment and on space. So in the spring, I reached out to Jack Hathaway, and we worked on putting together a space study committee. So on the town side, it's Jack Hathaway, Bob Bullock has been part of it, Ann Proto, and they are trying to get one of the selectmen to join. From the school side, it's myself, Matt Hafner, Linda Balfour has been the administrative rep, and Todd will be joining us as we get a little bit further in the process. But I really wanted to be out ahead of it and make sure that the town was aware of what the impact was going to be. In your packet, I gave you a few different things. First is just enrollment and space projections that I provided to that committee at our first meeting. So at the HL of Day currently, we are out of space. We don't have any open classrooms. We, over the summer, converted the teachers' workroom into a classroom instructional space, so there is no capacity at HL of Day currently for any expansion. We do have a waitlist for our pre-K program, and that waitlist continues to grow. And we are projecting that we are going to see some new enrollment at the lower elementary level. So the HOD is currently out of space. The Freeman Kennedy will be out of space by 2019 with the current enrollment rolling up. So you can see the building projections, you can see the scheduled number of classes, class sizes, the open seats in that document. But we are really close to being maxed out of space. The builders have submitted some projections for what they think the 40B projects will bring for enrollment. They typically, in my experience, tend to underestimate. So one of the first things we did was we reached out to Flansburgh, who are the architects that designed the Freeman Kennedy School. We wanted to talk to them about what potential this building had for future expansion. And we asked them to take a look at the 40B pending projects and give us their projections based on, you know, what they would use when they're designing schools. So they had a particular formula they used based on the number of bedrooms for each unit. They're projecting, and I think I included the chart from Flansburgh in your packet, they're projecting if all of those projects go forward that we will see an increase at the K5 level of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight students over the next, you know, over the course of development of these projects. We have also reached out to NESDEC, which is another independent group, and asked them to complete an independent enrollment study. So the school's funding that. It's low cost because we're members of NESDEC. They're going to do a more comprehensive analysis, looking at the location, looking at the real estate values. And they're going to have that to us within the next couple of weeks. So we'll have three independent enrollment projections. But we are pretty confident that it could be, if these all go forward, up to two-hundred-and-fifty new students.
Are they doing the projections based on how these 40B developments are proposed?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Because that's, I mean, typically, they are backed down some with various community, but they.
Right.
Probably will largely.
Some have been approved too.
Yes.
So they'll have real numbers, and then they're looking at proposed projects.
Those are two, they're massive, I think, to propose in terms of.
Yeah, I think I have the listing, but I think, yes, some of them are up to Lakeland Hills, I think, seventy-six homes. The Preserve is the big one, a hundred and forty-eight homes.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of.
So we'll have those other independent enrollment projections. What we've thought about, we've looked at several different options. We've thought about having, looking at a third site and developing an early childhood center, moving the special education offices and the pre-K programming to an early childhood site. Challenges are open land in Norfolk. We've looked at, you know, where that could potentially be located. The, it's probably not the best solution because you have build-out costs. Then you also have three different sites for transportation, for drop-up and pickup, and for parents that are picking up students, it's hard enough to get to two sites. So that would be a challenge, and plus you'd have additional administrative costs. So beyond adding teachers, you'd have to have a third administrator overseeing that building. So we pretty much ruled that out. The HL of Day, as Todd mentioned earlier, the systems are all aging and they're all at capacity. So there would be major infrastructure costs, and the building's really built out to the footprint of what we own. There's not a lot of room for expansion there. The best possibility looks to us like the Freeman Kennedy School was actually originally designed, and you have a picture in your packet, was originally designed to have a connecting wing that connected the two back branches. And that's the plan, when Flansburgh applied to MSBA to have a model school, they submitted it with possibilities for expansion. So that seems to be the best option for the town, would be to consider building out that wing. What we would be proposing most likely is to, in the bottom floor, move the preschool and the special education offices to the bottom floor of the building. And we would put a second early childhood playground out in that back field space behind the building there. The advantage to that is that preschool does not, it's a half-day program. They don't use the gym, the library, the cafeteria, so we don't have to schedule another grade level in for lunch. By moving that, it opens up five classrooms at the HL of Day plus office space. So we could move some people that are in classrooms into office space that's now available. And it would give you probably five or six, maybe even seven, open classrooms for future expansion there. The upstairs would have eight or nine new classrooms that would be not, the doors would be locked, so the pre-K would be separated, but the upstairs would give you a whole nother bridge of classroom space for Freeman Kennedy. The potential costs, based on square footage, could be about six and a half million for the town for that wing. But in order to get real numbers, we have to get design specs and actual drawings. So the other item that we have going on the December 5th town meeting is a twelve thousand dollar request for the town to have Flansburgh do schematic drawings that we could actually use to price and estimate the cost of this. Again, the space study committee is, right now, we're only looking at space. So this doesn't include the cost that the district would have to absorb for additional teaching staff, for, you know, transportation, additional busing. But we, you know, obviously, building, building a building takes time. So I wanted to have really good estimates of what the enrollment projections could look like and a possible plan that we could propose to the town, because sometimes it takes a while to get support for that kind of funding. We did look at mobile classrooms. It's not an ideal way to go. They're actually really expensive because you still have to do all the site work and infrastructure for plumbing and electric and everything. So I don't think that's a good option for the town at this time. Any questions about where we are?
We don't have to send the, do bids for people to do the.
Not for the design services?
No.
Because it's under the cap for the required RFP.
So the expansion drawings that you included are total of how many classrooms?
Well, these are just rough estimates based on the model school. If we're actually putting the preschool in, we have to have bathrooms in each of those classrooms, so it could change the size and the requirements. I think in the drawings, it was about.
High and low number, just roughly, I'm just curious.
I think it was nine upstairs, and I think it's downstairs, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and two offices. So it would give you a reasonable, and upstairs, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yeah, nine classrooms upstairs.
So maybe sixteen here, plus offices, and then, I think you said seven?
By moving the preschool and the special education offices out, it would free you about seven classrooms. We have five pre-K classrooms right now, and the special ed offices in the front have three different rooms, which you then could maybe move a resource room in there or something to free up.
Some other rooms?
Yeah.
And the status of the 40B projects, are they, so this is a high watermark essentially?
This is the high watermark, and they're all in various stages of approval.
Means one is already actively being built on Cleveland.
Yep.
And then there are a number of others that have just been introduced, and as I said, they're typically reduced in numbers. They will go forward, though, legally, you can't really stop them. So it's going to happen, it's just a matter of how well the developer wants to sort of play ball with us. play ball with us in terms of the town.
Right, because Norfolk does not, hasn't met their criteria for safe harbor for affordable housing, so they don't have the capacity to not approve the projects.
Yeah, we've been ripe for this for a number of years in terms of being a target, so.
And again, once NESDEC has the, their report, which I expect, they thought they would have it in the next few weeks, I should have it for you for December, we'll have that third set of independent enrollment projections to take a look at.
Now, within this design, are they just going to do the design as it was initially envisioned?
They'll customize it and do schematics based on what we're looking for, so they would put the bathrooms in for the pre-K.
Okay, so we'll just be married to this design.
No, we want
There may be something we change around that could better suit us going forward as opposed to when this was
Right, and it would be drafted per what our requirements are so that we could actually get some realistic pricing on the project. Is there anything I'm forgetting?
No.
No, okay.
Has this been shared with KP?
I reached out to KP and invited them to participate in the space study, and they have not expressed interest at this time. I know there's some changes happening in the administration, so I will certainly reach out again. They are aware of the Forty-B projects, but I'm not sure how they're moving forward in terms of planning. I don't know if Jeff can comment on that, but
I don't know if they've got any flexibility in their current setup, but
The enrollment projections that they're doing, they did project the impact on six to eight at a hundred and forty students and the impact on nine to twelve, one thirty-six, so potential for another two-fifty there. So, I have shared this information. I just don't know how they're proceeding with the planning at this point. They didn't have anybody that was available to participate in the committee.
I'll reach out to them and see if I can get some insight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any questions on the space study? So, I'll bring a further update in December when we have the new projections.
Thank you.
The other is just an informational item. I just wanted to let the committee know, so last year, the state rolled out the new MCAS 2.0 tests. They are a different test than we've given in the past, and they were also delivered in a different format. So, for the first time, our kids took the MCAS, it was all computer-based, except for the science and engineering. Those results are in, but they're later. The state was later in getting us the results. So, we just recently got the results and have sent the reports out to parents. Lisa Altham-Hickey will be coming in December, now that we've had a little bit more time to start to delve into those, to provide the committee with a full update and overview of the strengths and weaknesses that we found in our data analysis. Again, the, it's a brand-new test, so the state is considering this to be a benchmark year. You really can't compare it to past MCASs. It's just different item formats, different structure, different method of taking the test, so there really isn't a longitudinal, kind of long-term comparison. But we can still delve in and look at, from the curriculum side, what our kids did well in and what kinds of topics they struggled with, and develop a preliminary plan. So, Lisa will be here to share that with you in December. Okay?
Okay.
And the last item is the Norfolk Credit Union. They have come with this request last year, and the committee did approve it. They have run for free a financial management class for students, and they offer that. They have requested, because they are not school partners, this is the only event that they run, they requested that the committee consider waiving the room fee for their group and allowing them to send the communication out to families. We typically don't allow school, anybody but school partners to send mailings home. But because the goal of this is strictly to benefit students and for financial literacy, it has been a popular program, our parents, it's been fully enrolled when we've run it, and last year, the committee did vote to allow them to move forward with the waiving the room fee and sending the information out.
Emotionally, waive the room fee for them?
I make a motion that we waive the room fee and allow the mailing, the information to be sent out to the parents.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
How much is the room fee?
I would have to take a look. I think it's forty-five dollars or something like that.
I think it's fifty.
Is it fifty?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to them for doing that, it's very nice.
That's all I had.
All right, so moving on to committee reports. Jeff, with King Philip?
So, one of the things that happened July 10th, we ended up getting some information back from the IRS relative to the certification for the END. It was general fund of nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight, which would be as of July 1 in 2017. The information was then relayed from the Director of Finance and Operations, Larry Azza, who made a recommendation to utilize three-hundred-thousand of that towards miscellaneous expenses, including legal fees, negotiations, supplies, postage, workbooks, technical services, electricity, and a number of other items. That is, as again, was a recommendation, so that's something that's going to go through the board to see what additional items that we may or may not want to utilize at this time. There is going to be a regional meeting relative to representatives from Plainville, Norfolk, and Rantham, which is going to be coming up, I believe, on the 28th, having to do with all three towns. And some of the discussions they will have relative to simplified budget template for the progression requirements over a five-year period, three-year, three past budget years with budgeted numbers and actual expenditure numbers, current fiscal year budgeted numbers and execution, and next fiscal year proposed budget numbers. Additional items that were mentioned at the meeting relative to a cultural proficiency group which was created, having to do with some recent events at the high school concerning some freshman football players. I'm actually going to be part of that group. There also was a conflict of interest opinion that was given from one of the law firms that we contract with relative to one of the members on the board, Kenneth Dow, whose son is James Dow, who's the director of the DECA program. Next item we had relative to school improvement plan, which was presented by Dr. Zalinski. Any questions?
Not for me. Thank you. Moving on to market policy?
All right, with policy, we didn't end up having a meeting today, but we do have two items on the agenda for first reading. Ironically enough, the first item on the agenda is agenda format. So, there were some recommendations that come out, so you'll see stuff that struck out, and then the changes are in blue. Actually, that's more like an aqua, but
I was okay with the definition of blue, it's fine.
So, with these, okay, so there's that one. And then, the second one is the notification of school committee meetings. This one, I think, is just an incidental change.
Yeah, basically, the Mass Association for School Committees has a policy service, and they went through all of their policies over the summer and are recommending changes based on changes in law. So, some of these are adjustments made to be compliant with open meeting law, so things like the agendas have to be posted and available to the press are requirements of the open meeting law. So, we're just making, we basically went with the recommended changes that Mass put forward on both of these policies.
But I think the second one looks, is just an incidental change. I don't think that is very adept, or, I think we could get away with incidental change on the first one, too, which would only require one reading.
First one struck, what, two paragraphs and then added a paragraph? Did I read that right?
Just reworded one paragraph and struck out another one.
But they aren't scheduled for vote tonight, so we would need to
Yeah, so they'd put up next time, anyway, right?
We'd need to vote at the second meeting, we didn't put
Okay.
Good try, though.
It's worth a shot.
All right, so you got mine?
Yep.
Budget?
Budget, subcommittee is not going to be meeting in November. We'll start our process more formally in December by talking about variables and assumptions and any other concerns that administration has looking forward, and we'll set up our timeline as we usually do and continue on our way, but no other notable updates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we just need a vote on the minutes from the October 10th meeting? I think all four of us are here for that. Oh, no.
It was not.
So, Miss, we do have enough for a vote, though.
I make a motion that we approve the school committee meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
Assuming no further discussion on that one, you'll agree with her, we talked some stuff, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we are looking at December 12th for our next meeting. Does that work for everyone?
Looks like that will work.
Yes. And by me?
Would we want the subcommittee right after, at eight? For budget, okay.
All right. That's it, right?
We were considering doing an executive session, but I'd suggest that we table it to December.
I can't tonight.
Yeah, because we need to approve some minutes, and Jeff isn't here.
Okay. Let's just say I couldn't tonight, anyway, so. All right, so we are, we're adjourned. Thank you.
You're welcome.